Hi, this is Madison with Protect Our Kids on Say What Podcast and I'm here with a friend of mine coming to us from Cajon Valley Unified School District, Anthony Carnavali. Anthony, thank you so much for being on with us today.
Thank you, Madison. I don't know if you know this, but Cajon Valley modeled some of the language in our parent notification policy after what you worked on in Orange County, so.
Oh, wow. Well, that's such a compliment. Thank you. Yeah, we definitely worked our tails off making that something that was actually going to protect kids and parent rights. So I'm so glad that you were able to use that.
Yep, thank you.
Absolutely. So Anthony, why did you step up to serve as a school board trustee in Cajon Valley?
You know, I think it has a lot to do with the main reason that brings us here today. At the time, I saw that the unions and the school districts would sort of decide what happens to our kids and what our kids are told and what conversations those government employees have with our kids during the school day, and they weren't involving us. And I was like, well, that can't be right. And then, you know, I dug into it and I saw that in federal and state law, and people laugh when I say this, but even in California, state law, the state constitution is very protective of the parents' role in public education. And it's restrictive on what public school employees can and cannot do when it comes to students without involving their parents. As an example, would be adopting curriculum, or what questions you can ask a kid about their own personal beliefs around certain topics, including religion, politics, sexuality, that sort of thing. So for however long it went on for, I know I went to school in California and my parents have a much different memory in the 90s of, you know, send your kids to school, you trusted that they learned, there were trusted adults, and there wasn't the concern that we now face in our public schools where, I mean, I'll just get right to it, Newsom and his administration are bringing strange adults into our schools, from Glisten, from San Diego Youth Services in our case, to ask public school students questions that it's not exactly curriculum or public instruction, it's something different and something that, it seemed pretty clear that our laws at the Protection of People Rights Amendment at the federal level and California Ed Code 51513, if anyone wants to nerd out and look that up, it's very clear, like, schools are there to deliver public instruction, and those are government employees, and you drop your children off in the morning, you pick them up at the end of the day, and that's what you expect when you drop your child off at their public school, at your public school. Of course, in California, Newsom and the unions who back him would really like parents to forget the laws that protect their involvement, their notification, as you well know, I know I'm preaching to the choir.
No, I think this is great information. Keep going.
So as a parent, I said, okay, this is what my school board is there for. We were elected fiduciaries to each and every student of the district, and of course, we have major obligations to their parents in statute. So I ran for school board, and that's kind of what prompted me. And one of my signs said, more parent influence, less union influence, which everybody told me was like suicide mission, because one thing I don't think many people realize that even people, you know, there are school board members who say they're Republican. And I'm not saying of all school board members or even a majority, but even the Republican school board members or the conservative leaning school board members are under tremendous pressure to not get on the wrong side of the union, because that means they can pretty much outspend all the money you can raise and either not let you in office or work to get you out of office. It's just the reality that, and so the more conservative school board members who are more focused on making sure parents have a meaningful role in the schools as the law and the constitution guarantees, there's just tremendous pressure from these same unions that Newsom is kowtowing to in our case, to comply, to get on their side, to vote in their interests when they have their own representation. We're elected fiduciaries of the students of the district, and we need to remember that, no matter the cost. And again, I feel like I'm preaching to the choir. You know better than myself and probably most people listening to this.
Well, no, I think this is great information because it's a repeat over and over and over in Southern California of what it entails to be a school board member and what we're up against, because your sign said, you know, not here for the union, I'm here for the parents, I'm here for the kids. And you are experiencing currently pressure from the teachers' union to bow down and to take out a curriculum that you helped to author. Can you tell us a little bit about the sex ed curriculum that you helped author in Cajon Valley?
Yeah, so in 2023, so I was a brand new board member. Our board was presented with the, what's called the Positive Prevention Plus Curriculum, which was one of the approved curriculums from the state of California. And in the middle school student workbook, there were links to outside organizations like Glisten, like HRC.org. So I went there, pretending I'm a middle school student, as you know, and I'll explain. When it comes to adopting curriculum, especially the sex ed curriculum, under the California Healthy Youth Act, the state, the legislation stresses how important significant parent engagement is in the curriculum, not just in the adoption process, but once the curriculum is being taught, the involvement of a parent guardian or trusted adult is the language the state uses in the discussions on certain topics surrounding being safe when it comes to sex. We were presented these workbooks, these middle school workbooks, and at the time, our superintendent staff had already purchased all the workbooks for the middle schools.
Convenient.
Fifty of them. And they're like, you need to adopt this now because we haven't taught it because COVID and the state says it's the law. And so I look in here and I go, okay, glisten.org, to learn more about this definition of this word, go to glisten.org. To learn more, go to HRC.org on this Positive Prevention Plus Middle School Workbook. I go to HRC.org and the first thing that plays, I think they still play the video if you go to HRC.org, not trying to drive traffic.
Please don't. Just tell us what it's like, Anthony.
So this video plays on loop and it's a woman with a mad face holding up an American flag that's missing 28 stars to represent the 28 states that pass laws basically protecting public schoolchildren, let's be real. But that upsets HRC, so they have their reality flag, it's missing 28 stars. And then it loops to another part of the video where people are holding up protest signs in front of the Supreme Court saying, I will aid and abet abortion. Also in this curriculum was the statement that abortion is a very safe procedure. And the other requirement in CHIA is that it's medically accurate, right? So if you go to your doctor for like the most minor thing and you ask, is there any risk of side effect? Or I mean, even the most minor thing, you take oTylenol. It used to be when we went to school, our parents, if, you know, you needed a certain medication, it was in the nurse's office and you had to go there, you couldn't just like.
Pop it in your mouth, yeah.
Pop a pill at lunch, like.
Chapstick. I mean chapstick. My kids have to call home to get chapstick put on their mouths. Like, it's ridiculous that that's even an argument.
This is reminding me of Napoleon Dynamite.
Sorry. Tangent, tangent, yes. So continue. So the California Department of Education is coming after you because you wrote a different curriculum than what they want you to be able to teach in Cajon Valley. Is that right?
That's right. And Tony Thurman heads up the California Department of Education, right? He's our state superintendent.
He's my bestie.
As you well know, he's the one who showed up in Chino when.
And Orange Unified.
Oh, he showed up in Orange Unified too.
Yep, held some retail signs.
We might be getting a visit from Tony Thurman. I've renamed him Groomer Thurman, by the way.
Perfect.
He gets involved when parents like you or Sonia Shaw and that board up there get involved and say, look, we're elected. We represent our community. Our board bylaw, which is from California School Board Association, says, "The school board shall ensure the district is responsive to the values and beliefs of the community it serves." I'm pretty sure that's repeated across most of the public school districts in California, because most of us use CSBA policy books. So that's our role. And we're presented this curriculum and told, you need to adopt this now. And even in the curriculum itself, it said, and in the CHIA Act, it said, it spoke about the importance of significant parent engagement in the adoption process. It's like, okay, we don't have this yet. And when I go to HRC, it shows me this crazy politicized video. I didn't learn anything about, you know, to go, to learn more, go here. I went there to learn more and I didn't. So that's, we don't want to send our middle schoolers there. I went to Glisten and the first thing it tells me is how to delete my browsing history, and that's a good idea to do that. How to exit the page safely. And Glisten San Diego was actually circulating a form, a Google Drive form. I don't know where this Google Drive form went. It's still up on their X page, Glisten San Diego Shine, where they invited 12-year-olds, because this curriculum, they seem to know that this is going into seventh grade classrooms by law at this time, and seventh graders are 12 years old. So Glisten had a form that asked kids, what's your name, your age, your grade, what school do you go to? What is your home or safe address? What is your school or romantic preference? And they invited on their X account, it's still up, Glisten San Diego Shine, 12-year-olds to fill this out. Glisten also invited 12-year-olds, along with a few other groups, including the YMCA of San Diego County and San Diego Youth Services. They all sent out on their Instagram page, which I have screenshots of this, "Hey kids, want to earn some extra money? We will send you an e-gift card if you secret shop your doctor and report back to the Trans Youth Project, and the Trans Youth Project will use that information to bring education to doctors in San Diego County." The questionnaire that the Trans Youth Project was asking these, well, that Glisten was asking these 12-year-olds to fill out and send to the Trans Youth Project.
On their website.
On their website was whether your doctor was amenable to prescribing puberty blockers was one of the, there was a few questions along those lines. So I'm like, okay, this doesn't look like curriculum at this point. This looks like activism. And in fact, HRC and Glisten, I signed up for their alert. That was another prompting from this middle school workbook, going to that link, signed up for their alerts. And then I started getting text messages about how Ron DeSantis wants to erase the lives of trans youth in Florida and how the whatever legislator up in the Midwest was trying to pass legislation again to protect public school students. If I was in middle school and I had friends, I didn't know in middle school, but in high school, I had friends who were in the LGBTQ community. I still have friends from high school and beyond. My state assemblyman, Carl DeMayo, who I consider a friend, is gay. So it's not, if I was in middle school or high school and getting these messages about how Ron DeSantis is trying to erase the lives of trans youth or LGBTQ youth, that would stir me to activism, probably.
Yeah, it's confusing and it's clearly one-sided.
So anyway, we obviously didn't, we tabled that curriculum a couple of times and decided not to adopt it. Decided to hire a consultant, a curriculum writer for half a million dollars to help Cajon Valley write a curriculum. And our board established a committee, which was made up of our middle school science teachers. So they'd be the subject matter experts in this case, and our parents, our middle school parents or soon-to-be middle school parents. Significant parent engagement, according to our consultant, who we hired for half a million, is actually defined in California Education Code to mean 1% of the parent population of a district, which in our district is significant. We have, you know, 17,000 students, so.
That's amazing.
One and a half parents per student or, you know, what it is, but. So significant parent engagement would be a pretty large number in our district. We involved what we call our DLAC and ELAC Committee, which are English learner communities of parents and children in the development of the curriculum. And in spite of what the fake news is reporting, and it's, I want to go easier on the news because they're basically going off what Tony Thurman's doing.
Right.
I wouldn't be surprised if Tony Thurman got out over his skis, to be honest with you. I think Newsom might look at this and go, oh, shoot, because we had such significant parent engagement. Our teachers taught this curriculum last year. They reported it was widely liked by the teachers, by the parents, by the community, those who opted in, those who opted out of portions of it, those who opted out of all of it. Everyone was like, hey, this worked great. Thank you for, thank you. This was awesome. Thanks for involving us. To us, we were following the spirit of the law that the state passed down.
Yeah.
And our own board bylaws that says we shall ensure the district is responsive to the values and beliefs of the community. So around the time of last year that we taught the curriculum, our classified union president, Mark Regals, in classified union, for those who are wondering, we have a classified and a certificated union. Most school districts do certificated as like teachers, bus drivers, people who work in the cafeteria, that sort of thing. Non-prudential teachers.
The aides, the, yeah.
And it's interesting because like I work well with Mark Regals when it comes, like, we had an issue with our bus drivers driving special ed students and like having to deal with like getting a kid to sit down or not be in their space, like, and we didn't have that person there to help all these buses driving down the road with however many student souls on board, right?
Yeah.
So on that stuff, you know, I'm happy, I'm actually happy to work with the unions on wages, working conditions, student safety stuff.
Because it's common, it's common sense, right?
Yeah, but Mark Regals, who is not an educator, he is not a parent in the district, complained to Tony Thurman at the California Department of Education, saying that the curriculum didn't have enough activities about LGBTQ and that amounted to discrimination of students in the district. There's a uniform complaint process that you're aware of, and this is kind of what the state's trying to shoehorn this whole thing into, as far as I can tell, being a layperson, is sort of the uniform complaint process, which is there for staff, students to file uniform complaints based on allegations of discrimination or harassment. I think it's an important process to be there in our state.
Sure.
I don't understand the way that Tony Thurman is using it, because one of the questions on the complaint form is, if you're filing this complaint on behalf of someone else and they're under the age of 18, do you have their parent or guardian's permission, right? Like, the question is, that's often asked, is do you have standing? So, and even we've seen cases in California where a parent of a child sues the school district that their child goes to for some reason. And even in those cases where you have the parent, the child, someone who would, in the school district, someone who would have standing, the state will say, oh, you don't have standing in this particular area. The uniform complaint should have, to me, stopped there. It's like, who are you complaining on behalf of? Do Mark Regals complain that you were discriminated against because the, what the Cajon Valley curriculum says?
Right, which he'll never take as a student because he's an adult.
Right. Or is your kid, you know, are you complaining on behalf of your kid? Or did some parent come to you and say, I want you to represent me in this complaint process? Because that would be odd if you're not an attorney. So that, and if you look at the state's complaint, they quote paragraphs from Mark Regals. And then they like anonymize him, even though he was like, he went on the news when he did it. He was like, yeah, I think this board is political and they need to be taught a lesson by the state, basically. He's proud of it. He's on NBC 7, he's on Union Tribune, but the state's like, hey, judge, make Cajon Valley do this, because look, read this complaint. We've blocked out the name of the complainant. I'm hoping I'm wrong about it. I'm hoping the judge actually gets to see like, oh, was the classified union president? Okay, where's his standing? Does he have a kid that's claiming this? And I have no idea how it goes from here, but it's just state like anonymizes it. It's almost like they're embarrassed to show.
Because there is no standing. Right, because there is no standing. When was this complaint put forth?
Late last school year. And then the state got back to us in July and said, based on this complaint from Mr. Regals, we do find that you don't have enough activities and discussions with regard to LGBTQ. Now, we don't have activities and discussion with regard to like marriages between a man and a woman in holy matrimony either. We have definitions, instructional materials, based on the protected classes in California, which include non-discrimination, non-harassment, based on religion, age, race, identity, gender, gender identity, sexual preference, sexual orientation. There's a list. It's in the California law. We had that. We also had, which California law said, to teach the benefits of long-term committed relationships such as marriage. And in our curriculum, marriage was not confined to, you know, between a man and a woman, because that's not what our state law is. It's, we had the curriculum assessment tool, the compliance assessment tool, out through hundreds of hours of committee meetings, and we made sure that we were actually more compliant. We were more compliant than that Positive Prevention Plus curriculum I was telling you about earlier. And that's approved by the state, even though the state's own assessment of that particular curriculum, because they ran this assessment tool on all the curricula, says that it's missing major things. So now the state's like selectively choosing to go after Cajon Valley. And what the state ultimately approved to be added to our curriculum, which our, I'll call him our rogue superintendent, he's been on grounds for termination for a long time. That's my opinion. I'm hoping some of the other board members will see that now, because when Tony Thurman got back to us in July and said, yeah, we believe this union president, we think you need to say more things and have students engage in more discussion about this. He said, you have a right to reconsideration, 30-day right to reconsideration. This was July, we have a break in July. So I emailed the superintendent and said, hey, let's get the board together to decide whether they want to request reconsideration from Mr. Thurman's office at the California Department of Education. The superintendent, board president at the time, who's no longer the board president, didn't have us meet, wouldn't call that meeting. So the 30 days came and went. Every week I'd kind of circle back as the clock was ticking down, like, hey, can we? I think the strongest response would be like, hey, you might not have known this, but we had significant parent engagement. Mr. Thurman, do you, do you want the California Department of Education to kind of turn the whole idea of local control upside down and come tell our community, which is, we have a large Middle Eastern devoutly religious community who was significantly engaged as well. When I say devoutly religious, I mean like much higher than average. It's just a fact. And they were extremely engaged in this curriculum, because it was something that they really cared about and were concerned about for their kids, their seventh graders, eighth graders. My request for reconsideration would be like, hey, you took this one union president's story, but here's the story of our community, our educators, our educators, our science teachers. Some of them, I mean, they wouldn't go on TV and say this, but they were like, why is the classified union president stepping on this program that we taught, we were happy with?
Right.
And this committee of parents, it wasn't like all conservatives like me. It wasn't. There were parents who wanted to make sure that there were certain things in the curriculum, and some of those things got there, and that was the agreement of the committee. So, and honestly, there was, I don't want to paint it like there was just a clear divide, because there really wasn't. It was like, the educators and the parents got together from across the spectrum, and we all agreed like, yeah, that's, that's good to teach. Like, that is medically accurate. It's, it's good that kids are taught to be inclusive, respectful, these sorts of things, right? Not discriminate, harass, like, everyone wants their kid to know that, I'm sure, unless you're a psychopath. So it was like this great success story, but we were left out. Then our superintendent tried to convince the board why it was a good idea for the board to decide not to respond. It's like, we didn't. We didn't meet, so that's not, that didn't happen. You did. Then he submits his changes to Tony Thurman in September, and one of the changes was.
This was the one board member, right?
This is just, no, this is just our superintendent.
Oh, your superintendent. Yes, 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 okay.
Hasn't involved the board at all at this point.
So just the superintendent is communicating with Tony Thurmond?
Directly, yes. And it's almost like he's writing like ransom letters. He's like, help me, my board won't do what I want them to do, you know? Come in here. And it's like, man, I don't think that's how superintendents are supposed to do that. But he submits his changes to Tony Thurman. I asked him before he did, I said, are you going to involve the committee, the board setup of the science teachers and the parents in these revisions? And he said, no, like, well, that's not good. We need to. But he didn't. He never brought it to the board's agenda. And he added, like, one of the terms was to have the students learn the definition of pansexuality, then turn to a partner and discuss it, and to be prepared to share out what you discussed.
Wow.
Pansexuality is not in the CHIA curriculum assessment tool. You don't have to have that. You have to recognize that there's LGBTQ relationships, bisexual relationships. You have to teach kids how to be safe, you know, with different sexual activities that would go along with those lines, right? But.
Well, and Anthony, did you know that, I learned this as a school board member, and maybe you know this already, but you can keep your kid home from the sex ed curriculum, you can opt out. But you cannot opt your child out of the gender identity portion of sex ed curriculum. So that is something that I learned, at least in Orange Unified, which I thought was statewide. You can't opt your child out of the gender identity. So pansexualism, if your child wants to be an animal, that is all something that you can't opt your child out of, but you can out of the generic sex ed curriculum, which quite frankly, I don't find to be that offensive. Obviously, Positive Prevention Plus was garbage. But similarly to what you're saying, that pansexual information that they couldn't have missed out on if that was passed in Cajon Valley.
Right. If we, if we opted them in, and I've heard the same thing from our administrators, our superintendent. However, on that point, the way the law reads to me is if you are doing social studies or history, and there's mention of an LGBTQ character, which this happened in Temecula. And our case is being compared to Temecula, but the difference is, and I look to the Temecula Board as leaders, so nothing I say here is to be in any way derogatory. I learned from them, because their board was going to pass a social studies curriculum for elementary schoolers, as I understood it. And in there, it has this page where it talks about Harvey Milk, who was an elected LGBTQ advocate in California in the 70s, 60s.
Yeah, I think so.
And then it has like Chaz, and all these people, and it wasn't like, here's Harvey Milk, here's where he was elected to, here's what he accomplished, here's the ship that's named after him. It was like this page about, here's Harvey Milk, here's Chaz Bono, who's Sonny and Cher's kid, he's, he's trans. And then he was like, it's just like, okay, what's the context here?
Right. What are you trying to teach with this page?
Right. And so I think it was the board president at the time, you probably, you're probably familiar with this, but the board on its own, as I understand it, basically said, wasn't Harvey Milk a pedophile? And then, you know, decided not to pass this curriculum to be put before these elementary schoolers. And so the state, you know, it really made Newsom mad and Scott Wiener, and there are people arguing, you know, how dare he call him a pedophile? He was a pederast. It was 16-year-old boys, not prepubescent kids. It was like, okay, you guys lost that argument, I think. But Newsom's argument was, well, parents, there was significant parent engagement with this curriculum. And he came out, I think he tweeted this, that 98% of parents in Temecula approved the passage of this curriculum, which I don't know where they got those dictator numbers. That's like Vladimir Putin got elected with 95% of the vote or something.
Right.
That was Newsom's main argument, though. And he actually, that summer, in this library, he was given this press conference, and he described, I think, in the most eloquent way possible. I'm like, oh, I see why you're a governor. Because it was like 45 minutes into this press conference, and he seemed to have a moment of clarity, where he said, we have a responsibility as a state, school districts have to have significant parent engagement, not just when it comes to adopting curriculum, but they can challenge it afterward. And like, he goes on to this, he does this whole thing. I've read it out in a few of our board meetings. But that was his defense, and that, that was his attack on Temecula. Oh, these, these fourth graders are going to start the year without social studies, so we're going to find you Temecula, and we're going to purchase the books, because you can't be an educational agency that isn't teaching kids social studies in their fourth grade.
Right.
Okay. The difference in Cajon Valley is, we had significant parent engagement, our community and educator engagement. Our community was near unanimous in its support for the curriculum we passed and in the opposition to adding, you know, discussion topics about pansexuality with other people's children in seventh grade. Pansexuality in particular is not required by the state. And when it comes to sex ed, this is, and I said this to my superintendent, because they make the same claim, well, you can't opt your kid out of the gender identity section of sex ed. You can opt your kid out of every part of sex ed. In our district, right now, with the curriculum we have, you can opt them out of any section or number of sections of sex ed and have them be taught on the other sections. But when it comes to like social studies curriculum in fourth grade, the board on its own can't say, we're not going to, we're going to pull that book off the shelf because Harvey Milk's in it. There's like legislation against boards doing that. Parents, on the other hand, can rally and say, yeah, we are challenging the adoption of this curriculum. We don't want this section of the curriculum to be taught to our kids, and the community can, the community has a voice. The board on its own, though, and that's, again, this is hindsight, like Temecula had to go through this for me to learn this.
Right, I know. Thanks, Temecula.
Yeah, thank you, Temecula. But to see how Newsom played it, and it was perfect, I think. Like, I was actually happy that he was learning and picking fights with school districts about local control, about significant parent engagement and the requirement there. So, you know, the whole time we were doing our thing with the curriculum, I was like, this is, this is great. This is like a model.
Yeah, because you created an environment where you had teacher engagement, you had parent engagement. It sounds like you even had students that kind of test ran your curriculum. And now you have the California Department of Education coming after you with a lawsuit, because they feel like you guys did not, that you're discriminating upon a certain class of people. And so you passed, I actually watched your board meeting, I think messaging with your wife. But I watched your board meeting. It was quite contentious, and I was so proud to watch how eloquently you just continued to bring, you know, forth the vote to, to vote in this curriculum. And, and what was the result? You guys, what did you end up, end up voting in for your curriculum?
We voted in the curriculum that our community and teachers developed, and that was last March. Now, the more recent vote that you might have seen was the superintendent sent to Tony Thurman, hey, what if we add these discussions about pansexuality and these sorts of things? Is that good? And the state got back to our superintendent in September and said, yeah, that's good. That works.
So again, this is your superintendent not getting guidance from the school board, but reaching out to the state superintendent, asking advice, and I'm guessing this is what they would call secondary or supplemental instruction, that your superintendent wants to put in for students to have these questions asked to them in their class by their teachers without parents' knowledge or involvement. Is that correct?
That's correct. In fact, when I asked him, are you going to involve our committee and our parents on these changes? He said, no. And that was in August. So in September, he did his own changes. The state got back pretty quick, less than two weeks, and said, yeah, that's good. And then our superintendent sat on it for two months. We had a board meeting in October, we had a board meeting in November. It didn't come to us. In December, when the December board meeting posts, we find out, and that's our annual organizational meeting, as you know. It's already a busier than normal agenda just at the baseline.
And they like to hide it down there in those consent items that you just voted in one chunk on.
Yes. In fact, I, yeah, my first vote after getting sworn in was one of those where the person I unseated on the board, she put her own $10,000 a month contract, because she was the president, who set that agenda. And we voted, we voted on all this stuff, and a month later, I, it became a whole thing. There's still an FPPC investigation. But I was like, wait a minute, what is this Alphabet Soup LLC? Oh, that's owned by the, you know, lady who's just unseated. I'm like, wait, she was the board president. Didn't, she made this agenda. How did she put her own contract on the agenda? Actually, you're not supposed to do that.
No, no, that's complete conflict of interest.
So, yeah, it was, it was a December meeting, packed agenda, and the superintendent basically told us, look, the state already approved this. Like, you need to pass it because we're heading into Christmas break and the teachers need to start training on this right away. And the board tabled it. And one of the questions my fellow board member asked was like, how long have you had this? And the board tabled it. And, and one of the questions, uh, my fellow board member asked was like, how long have you had this? They wouldn't answer it. And they, they actually said the state took months to get back to them. Well, we find out from the state and I confirm with our superintendent, no, it took, took them less than two weeks. And you had this back in September, you bring it to us in the 11th hour in December and tells us we have to pass it. It's like, no, we're going to table it and refer it back to the committee of the board established that developed this whole curriculum, right? And so we did. And then they pushed that to the 11th hour. It was like just before, actually it was after our January board meeting. They didn't even set it up until January, when the board said on December 17th, let's refer it back to committee. Late January, they had the meeting. They, they basically tell the committee, this has already been approved by the state. And if we make any changes, like we could be in hot water with the state, which was true. I mean, but it's because we're backed into a corner now, right? Fortunately. And.
Well, and, and I see, you know, with all of this that you're telling me, you already passed this curriculum that your families are happy with. Your students are getting taught sex ed curriculum, which, you know, obviously is part of life. That's something that they do need to learn about. But, you know, you already passed this curriculum and you've already moved forward with it. And then here's your superintendent going behind your backs as school board members, making decisions without your direction or knowledge. And I mean, in my opinion, that is grounds for them being dismissed as superintendent because you are their boss. Your school board is their boss. And if they're not taking the, the right direction, it doesn't sound like they should have a job with a district that doesn't see the same way that they do.
You summed it up perfectly there. So, yeah, the vote that we took. So after our committee was backed into a corner and basically said, yeah, even one of the parents at the committee asked the question, what's our purpose here then?
Right.
We do anything or change anything, you're telling us like we're already in trouble with the state. So then it comes back to the board and, and that was the most recent vote.
That's the one I probably watched then.
You know, we asked the questions of the superintendent, like when was, when were the parents involved, you know, to understand what our, what our community wanted, really. That's, that's a lot. And, uh, our community showed up also and gave public comment unanimously opposed to adding these things to the curriculum. And so we voted no to the changes, which means we still have that original, uh, curriculum that we developed last year and taught last year to the seventh and eighth graders in the district with great reviews.
And you had, I, I, like I said, I watched it. You had some really incredible families and parents and advocates that came out to express their support of the curriculum as it was, instead of making these, these adjustments, these, um, these changes. And I mean, I would love the opportunity to bring you back on, Anthony, especially as this story continues to unfold and unwind. But just for the sake of, of not doing this podcast for a complete hour, I think we're going to kind of wrap it up. And if you will, I would love to have you back on, on Say What Podcast, if that's an option for you to further discuss this.
Absolutely. I'm sure there'll be more breaking news in the next few weeks on this.
Yeah, on this saga, exactly. Well, I'll definitely bring you back on, Anthony. Anthony Carnavale with Cajon Valley Unified School District. He's been just a warrior down there. And, um, I'm just so grateful for another parent right advocate. So Anthony, thank you again for coming on our podcast and love to have you on as soon as, uh, this story continues to unwrap.
All right. Well, this is Madison Minor with Protect Our Kids Podcast. Please come and join us, uh, next time. Please feel free to email me at Madison@pok.org. And we have, uh, social media outlets. We have a YouTube channel. We have a website. So please come and check us out. We have ways that you can get involved as a parent and we have ways that you can advocate to protect your kids. Thank you and see you next time.